Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for attending tonight's council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. We will have the invocation by Mr. Don Smith. And the Pledge of Allegiance by me.
Dear Lord, thank you for all you do for us. We are extremely lucky to live in Colleen. Guide the city council as they do our city business and help all of us to support our city government in a way like Jesus would want us to do. The council will be dealing with funds issues. Some people say money is the root of all evils. Money is paper and coins. It can't talk. How we use the money is the issue. Guide the city council as they deal with our money issues. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join with me in honoring our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Solomon, sir?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Agenda, yes, sir.
Yeah, agenda.
I second.
Second by Mayor Proton. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Will you please raise your hand? All in favor, yes. One, two, three, four. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary.
PR 24008, Colleen Star Award.
Thank you so much.
Once again, good afternoon, everyone. As you know, with our Star Awards, it is the council way of representing an individual in the community. And this particular one, I know personally, and he has done extraordinary things. And Councilmember Segala recommended him, Mr. Valentine, you can come on up, sir, recommended him, and he will be giving you a speaking on his behalf.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And it is my privilege and honor, because I've known Johnny for a long, long time, and I've watched the many things that he's done here, not just within the city, but as everybody knows, one of the big things is always promoting our downtown. And he's been like an instrument down there. He not only has his operation going down there where it serves our soldiers and stuff, but he's also been very engaged in bringing other businesses. As I toured the downtown, I noticed it was because of him that we have other businesses that are doing very well. He brought one in particular from the Georgetown area and done it. But all that said, let me read, because I don't want to miss anything here. So John Valentine stands as a visionary founder and CEO of Operation Phantom Support located in our downtown Colleen and serves as an invaluable asset to our military community. With an unyielding dedication to serving military families, John has been the driving force behind the organization's transformative endeavors since it is established in 2013. Under John's steadfast leadership, Operation Phantom Support has emerged as a beacon of support for our nation's heroes, impacting the lives, get this, of 365,000 soldiers, this is all in Colleen here, veterans and first responders. Their food pantry stands a tangible testament to their unwavering commitment, having provided sustenance for more than 1,300 family members in our community, outstanding numbers. Furthermore, the nonprofit has brought joy to countless military children through the provisions of over 7,500 birthday cakes and essential school supplies for over 12,500 families. No small numbers. This is incredible. During the festive season, the business spreads warmth and cheer by distributing over 22,000 toys to military children, putting smile on so many faces. Beyond these noble initiatives, they also played a pivotal role in assisting veterans transition into civilian life and facilitating over 1,500 job opportunities since 2013. So John's impact transcends beyond the operations of Phantom Support. He personally mentors and veterans, empowering over 250 individuals to pursue their entrepreneur aspirations. And so beyond philanthropy, John has assisted in the growth, as I said, in our Colleen downtown area, fostering positive development and prosperity. He is a visionary entrepreneur who has catalyzed economic growth in Colleen. His leadership has not only uplifted the community, but also led the establishment of three, he's got three businesses going, one of them a brewery.
Yep, only one in the city.
Only one in the city. So John not only changed lives, but he also guided our Colleen community towards a future filled with prosperity and promise. So with that, it is my honor as councilman, allowed by the council and our mayor, to present this award to Mr. John Valentine III. I wonder if the first and the second.
I'm watching business. I'm sorry. I'd just like to thank Jose. I've known him for years. We're in the Rotary Club together, do a lot of things. He was the mayor for a while, and I used to reach out to him for guidance, knowing that he was a veteran too, so I always reached out to him to make sure I was sustaining and doing the things I need to do for this community. The biggest thing I look at, and the reason I started the nonprofit, is because I wanted this community to be stronger and grow, to do things better for the people that live here, whether they're military or not, but we just wanted to make it stronger. My kids are growing up in this community, so I wanted to make sure this community was stronger. I had done a lot of mentoring and brought a lot of businesses downtown to Colleen, because I talked to people about the opportunity and tried to get them motivated to come down here. I got a friend that came from Georgetown, has a t-shirt business, and he does really, really well, and he just bought a building across the street. He was renting for me for a little while, but now he just bought a building downtown, so he's here permanently now, so it's great. I look forward to working with the people in this city, and I just love being here. So thank you for this. I appreciate the recognition. But this charity that I run downtown does amazing things for this community, and we try to continue to do those things. So thank you guys for being here, and thank you for the award.
You're welcome. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[797.82]
A unique perspective that none of you have is some of the plans and proposal, what the streets are supposed to look like, what that's going to do to businesses. None of you have driven an 18-wheel commercial vehicle weighing 80,000 pounds, 75 feet in length, through streets and areas that look exactly like that. Houston is rolling that sort of thing back. Dallas, north end of Dallas, you go up around Redbird, you go up around Coca-Cola plant up there, just absolute disaster. They're rethinking their good idea, which was this, with regard to funding and all this with the members of the bond advisory committee. This is more questions that I have. Why, if I'm wrong, please tell me, why do we have at least one person being proposed for this bond committee that doesn't even reside in Colleen? That's not going to be on the hook for any debt that any of this comes up? This rush to get this bond for things that we do not need. There is, this is vanity project, especially for the city hall, where we have all this fiber optic cable being run all over the city punching holes in the plumbing. If Zoom is good enough for you folks, when you don't want to show up to meetings, why is that not good enough for the city manager to have a department head meeting remotely? It's mismanagement to have department heads and supervisors here, let's say if this were the new building, here, and if their hands-on were needed at their departments, how much productivity is going to be lost in travel time back and forth alone, plus what they were already working on? I mean, when you consider the fact that the comedy club, Forest 20 East Avenue C, by comparison, not even a year in operation, it's already up for sale, looking through the contract and all of that, we're going to lose out. That was wasted money. All the moving parts that were supposed to happen in a 46-page contract fell apart, and now we're going to go all in for over $100 million in the end for bonds? This needs, tap the brakes, slow it down. I see the city manager getting a quizzical look on his face. I know how government spending works. Why have one when you have two at twice the price? This is nonsensical, and we could be spending this money if we needed to raise money on anything but what's proposed on the current bond initiative. So, once again, I'm seeing mismanagement, I'm seeing poor planning, we've already seen poor execution with Forest 20 East Avenue C. That's just one micro example. Now, we're going to go to a macro example to think we're going to do better?
Mr. John Price. Good afternoon, Mr. Price.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
You have four minutes.
Okay, y'all ready? I got a bunch of questions. I usually don't get any answers from y'all, but I'm going to try anyway, okay? So, and if I get onto a, just before I start, if I get into a topic that's not, because we got three of them tonight, you know, if I go in there, just tell me, wrong, wrong win, and I'll carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Price, so kind.
So, fizzing comments. DS 24-021, why or what money has been spent for this, right? What are we doing as a city, and why is it really an important thing when it's a natural celestial event that happens? You know, I guess, you know, we could spend some money at this elementary or high school level, but why is this a major item? I'm not really following that line there. RS 24-43 and 44, the spending of this money, $2.8 million for Chaparral and 760 for Ransier. Yeah, let's not, let, let's delegate somebody other than the city manager's office to move and asset the management of these operations here or these issues here, please. I don't have any faith in that the money will be spent appropriately. RS 24-045, what is the projected cost in this event for the, because this installs a climate change, new green deal agenda from Fort Cavasos, right? That's what it's premied under, according to the administration, and we're going to be following regulations from Fort Cavasos for the green, you know, the new green deal and the climate change agenda. So, what are we spending? What is the regulations going to be that we have to follow as a city and regulate and RS 24-48, I looked at the contract, and it's really overpriced for our city government to go through this maintenance program at a 15% upcharge at three years. So, we go from 258,000 to 297,000 for maintenance of a software program by, just, I'm at a loss. Plus, we don't get seven days' worth of coverage. So, why don't we have 24/7 coverage with that price for just simple maintenance of a software program, which is usually automated through a computer anyway? RS 25-051, I would offer a separate name other than Fort Cavasos, and if it's going to be Fort Cavasos, can Fort Cavasos pay for the changing of all the signs and maintenance of the park, or if it's going to be named after them? Otherwise, I would call it the Colleen Urban Nature Trail. Name it after us, since it belongs to us, right? As a city, it's ours. Claim it. We don't need to give it to Fort Cavasos unless if they want to buy it and operate it and maintain it and pay for it. I can understand that. Because I don't like changing history. Otherwise, just leave it alone. We don't need to change the name. We don't need to change the name and all that stuff. Leave history as it is. It's written. It's there. It happened. Hooray. RS 24-052, I would call it in and dissolve this board immediately. We don't need to spend any more money. Our country is broke, our state is broke, our city is broke. If we owe any money in debt, we're broke. Stop spending money. We're in debt. It just causes us to have, to pay more money that we already don't have.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Am I done? Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you so kind.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Kegel, I heard this word proxy housing scheme, that was that we're trying to pull over on the PFC. For clarification, that is not what the PFC is designed to do, or are we trying to do it?
I couldn't really tell you what they were trying to say, Mayor. Yeah, housing is involved, obviously, and one workforce housing project, and if this is approved, it's one senior low-income housing project.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Excuse me. City ma, Mr. Kegel, could you explain the difference between Station 54 and that, the two projects?
Station 42.
42, thank you.
Sure. Station 42 is workforce housing. 50% of it is for moderate income. There is some reduction in rent for 50%. 50% is market rate. The other project is for low-income seniors, that's people over 55 years of age, and I don't know the exact percent, but 90, 95% is for low income and 5% roughly, something like that is market.
And then, excuse me, for the eclipse, we're not, my understanding is that's, this briefing is so that we understand the doubling in size of the area and the emergency issues, but not actual.
Yes, sir. You're correct.
Okay, we haven't allocated any money specifically.
Well, I mean, I'm sure there'll be some overtime, there'll be more money spent because of it, yes.
Other than that, I think the other ones will be explained, I guess. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel, and Councilmember Adams. Madam Secretary, resolutions.
RS 24-053, consider a memorandum resolution approving the amended and restated certificate of formation of Colleen Public Facility Corporation.
Thank you. Attorney Clemens. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the item to amend the PFC certificate of formation, and I have Ms. Great House also on Zoom, but if we can pull up the presentation. All right. So, a little bit of background, City Council approved the original certificate of formation for the KPFC in January 2021. The certificate of formation limits, currently limits the purpose of the PFC to a partnership in one specific project, and that's that Station 42 that's been mentioned this evening. On March 5, 2024, subject to amendment of the certificate of formation, the PFC approved a non-binding resolution inducing the Avanti Legacy Parkview Apartments transaction, and to continue to support the Avanti project and allow the PFC to participate in additional projects, amendments to the COF must be.
Madam Mayor, point of personal privilege, can we have the presentation shown on the two, so the residents can see?
He's working, they're working on it, right?
Thanks, sorry.
Here we go.
I apologize for that, Councilmember Adams and Attorney Clemens. Do you want her to wait until they're up?
They're up.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, the floor is yours.
Thank you, no problem. So, to continue to support the Avanti project, amendments to the certificate of formation must be adopted. The certificate of formation may be amended by resolution of City Council and adopted by the PFC. The amended and restated certificate of formation, which is included in your packet, updates dates, numbering, and the names of directors, that includes current council members instead of the initial council members that were included when it was formed. One note on this, one change that we're recommending into what's in the packet is inserting Section 3, intentionally omitting Section 3, so that the numbering doesn't actually change. Not a substantive change, but just puts the numbering back in the same order. But these, the purpose of these changes is to broaden the purpose of the, of the PFC to allow participation in additional projects without having to come back and amend the certificate of formation every time you want to do a new project. But any project is going to be approved by, by the PFC and will come to the, to City Council as well. It's not carte blanche for anything just to happen. I mean, these are all public meetings that will be approved in the future, but amending the PFC allows you to do this with additional projects, with this, with the Avanti project and additional projects, without having to amend the COF every time.
Yes, ma'am. A quick question, Councilmember Boyd.
Just thank you, Madam Mayor. Do other cities typically bundle their PFC projects under one PFC, or do they commonly separate them?
Usually the PFC, but I'm going to, I want to answer the initial question of usually your Articles of incorporation are, other, other PFCs do not limit themselves to one project under the PFC. That is very unusual. But as far as whether you have different projects under the PFC, I'm going to ask Ms. Great House. Ms. Great House, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
So, yes, so, I work with about 40 different housing-related entities across the state, and it is highly unusual for them to have a limitation. This, I would say this is the only one that I work with that has a limitation in the certificate of formation that only limited to one, to one project. As far as bundling the projects, that, it will need to be underneath the umbrella of the PFC, but the PFC can hold each project through a single-member LLC, that that would then kind of isolate each project. But it's going to have to all be done under the umbrella of one, just because the, the process for forming these is so cumbersome, coming back to the City Council each time, which is why we've recommended a broad purpose for this entity.
I understand, and that makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? Attorney Clemens.
Thank you. So, if approved by the City Council and adopted by the PFC, amendments will be filed with the Secretary of State, and staff does recommend approval of the amended and restated certificate of formation, which broadens the PFC purpose to allow it to participate in additional projects. And I'm here for any questions.
There are no questions at this time. With that being said, can I get a motion to approve? Did you?
Let's, let's.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you, Solomon.
One of the citizens did inquire regarding the, stating that by changing this and amending this particular, the amendments, that this would be creating a proxy housing authority. I don't understand that to be the case, but can we get some clarity there as it relates to that, please? I don't have that information.
I don't really understand the reference to that, so it's hard to comment. It does not make this a proxy housing authority. It's a public finance corporation under the statute. Ms. Great House, did you have anything further on that?
That's correct. Proxy housing authority, or not proxy, housing authorities are governed by Chapter 392 of the Texas Local Government Code. This is a public facility corporation that's governed by Chapter 303. So, these are entirely different organizations. This is not a public housing authority. As that term is generally used, you will not be having public housing, would not have the ability to have vouchers to give to citizens, so this is not a proxy housing authority. This is an entity that can help finance housing, but it can also help finance many other types of public facilities, such as, you know, parking garages, convention centers. There's a whole host of, of different reasons that you would use a public facility corporation, but it is not a housing authority.
I think that's sufficient, and thank you for that clarity for our constituent. Thank you.
Councilmember Segar.
Mayor, I just want to say, I think that from day one, this is a fantastic project, and I would like to see more come into the city, because this doesn't cost the city any money. I mean, we had a piece of empty lot that we were, I think, taxing maybe around, if I remember right, $7,500 a year. Now, we got in a beautiful complex with our citizens who live there, and, I mean, I know the city's going to make some money, but even if we didn't, it's, it's a great opportunity for those citizens to live, spend money, and all that. And so, I'm very supportive. I think that hopefully we'll be able to do more projects like this. What, what projects can a city do where it doesn't cost us anything? I mean, most of the time, we have to pay money, and so, this is what we always encourage, you know, partnerships like this, and this is a great partnership. And so, Mayor, with all that said, I move to approve RS 24-053.
Thank you. Councilmembers Gonzalez.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries, seven to zero. We were now recessed to have the Public Facility Corporation meeting. Thank you. City Council meeting is off recess. We're back in order. Let the record show, all council members are present. Madam Secretary.
DS 24-021, total solar eclipse briefing.
Thank you. Chief Kobeski and Mr. Perez, will it be Mr. Perez brief? Okay, chief. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are y'all tonight?
Fine, and you?
Good. All right. So, this is our final briefing before the total solar eclipse on April 8. Not much has changed. So, again, on April 8 is the total solar eclipse that will go through the city of Colleen and other areas. We will experience a total of 4 minutes and 16 seconds of the total solar eclipse. That does not include, obviously, the start time and the end time. The start time is about 12:30 and ends at around 2 o'clock. That 4 minutes and 16 seconds is going to happen starting at about 1:30. And so, we are one of the largest cities, I think, I can confidently say, we are the largest city in, in the middle of the path, closer than Dallas, closer than Waco, closer than Austin. So, this is that path, as you see, starting down in Mexico and then ending on our continent off of Canada in that area. And then, you can see here again how close we are. All right, so, we have been doing a number of communication pieces out to our public on how to prepare both for the community members in general, as well as our business partners. And so, obviously, we want to make sure that people are preparing for the inconvenience, much like they would be preparing for a holiday weekend and a surge of people. We're going to basically double in size, is our current estimate, and so, we want to make sure that you have fuel and groceries by the Wednesday before that Monday. That way, you're not having to battle the crowds that are going to most likely start coming here on Thursday or Friday. So, you want to have all your errands wrapped up by that Wednesday before and be able to basically not have to go to the grocery store, hopefully get gas, until the Wednesday after the solar eclipse. Prepare for the traffic. Again, stay off the main arterial roads. Obviously, those will be the ones that GPS is going to take most people to as they go through the areas. And then, for our businesses, we've been working with them and making sure that we've been messaging for them to be stocked for about two weeks ahead of time. We're going to want them to be stocked up. So, that is next week. By the end of next week, we would want them to be stocked up for the solar eclipse. We have recommended that if they don't have an online reservation system, that they should have that, so that people can either reserve a seat or maybe reserve food, order ahead online, and that will help them be, to experience this total solar eclipse, serve as many customers as possible, so that they can run their business, and people will leave knowing that Colleen is able to handle that. And then, of course, we've also worked with them on scheduling staffing with the heavy traffic in mind. They might want to stagger their scheduling differently. Big safety recommendations, so the number one thing is obviously, do not look at the sun directly unless you have protection on. That would be a bad idea. Do not do that. So, you want to ensure that you have special solar filter glasses that you can wear. We've been giving them out at the convention center. The library is giving them out this month. If you go to one of their programs this month, you can also get those. And then, if you'd like to, you can also purchase one of those from HEB. I've seen them at Walmart, Sam's, Amazon. We want folks to obviously plan extra time for, for anything they have to do during that heavy impact from Friday through Monday. We don't want them rushing. If you rush, obviously, that's what's going to cause a traffic incident that we do not want. We have been working with our regional and county partners on both public safety, but also in all other manners, just in operating city staffing in normal, to come up with a joint plan. And so, we, as a county, feel very prepared and very ready for this. And the, one of the other things that I was reminded of today is that illegal dumping ordinances would still be in effect. So, if anybody has rented any porta-potties, please know that you cannot dump a porta-potty into a sewer manhole. That would not do good for the sewer plant down the road, because you're adding more microbial to the system, and you don't want to add more into a system that they manage. And so, anything dumped into the roadway at all, gray water, black water, any of that, that is against our city ordinances, and you should not do that. We also want to remind community members that they should sign up for emergency notifications. You can do this by going to readycolleen.org and signing up for our code RED emergency notification system, so that if anything does happen or there's a message we need to send out, you will be contacted. As I said, we, as a city, have been preparing for, basically, really, three years we've been meeting, but the, probably the past year and a half, things have really ramped up. So, here's a brief timeline of the things we've had. We had an initial press conference in November 2022. We had three, there were three business preparedness town halls last year. Two of them were put on by the city, and another one was put on by the Innovative Black Chamber. And then, we've been doing, we've had two community town halls as well. Ms. Janelle's office from the Communications Department has really been sending out a lot of information, so please make sure you stay tuned to that. For people who want to know more information, you want to know about where events are, how, what time they are, and some of these events require registration ahead of time, we would invite you to look at the information at the bottom of this. And so, those websites, colleantexas.gov/eclipse, or our Visitors Bureau website, which is visitcolleen.com/eclipse, that will have all the information that most of those people are looking for. And I believe that is it, if there are any questions.
Counsel, if you already clicked on, just raise your hand. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if you had this answer, but do we have an estimate on income and costs, like, from hotel, hotel tax and sales tax?
No, we won't have an estimate on that. We have been discussing with the chamber, our Visitors Bureau has been in constant communication with the chamber, in the hotel occupancy rates, so whether hotels are full or not. The majority of the hotels within the central Texas area, I would say from Waco all the way down to San Marcos, are at 95% to 99% full for, starting Friday, and we saw that many hotels were requiring a three-night stay, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and majority of people opted to also stay Monday night. So, we're expecting probably for us to have traffic Tuesday morning as well, but that should be about it.
Okay. Real quick, Mr. Kegel, how soon after that period would we know that? We have to wait till the quarterly report to know an increase in sales tax or?
It will be a long, it will be several months, because when the, there's a two-month delay, the taxes are collected in one month, the next month, they're sent to the state, and then the next month to local. So, and, and our number is large enough, it's going to be hard, it's going to be hard to tell. There could, there could be other factors, positive or negative factors in that number that outweigh anything that the eclipse traffic brought in.
Thanks. And then, we have an estimated overtime cost. I don't need the number right now, but late after, at some point, send the council.
So, we don't have estimated cost of that. We are obviously, in our plan, we will, there will be some people who will be on overtime. So, what we can work on is afterwards, working with our finance department to see if there's a report that they could generate for the city manager and council.
All right, thanks. And I, and I applaud the work you guys have done, and make, what we did with Y2K, look, a lot of mistakes were made then. I just hope we don't have the same knuckleheads that, and I'll talk to Chief Lopez about that offline, that we had to deal with for Y2K. So, thank you, and I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Madam President.
Mr. Perez, I am so excited, and you know I'm excited. I called you from San Marcos, and I was like, okay, Peter, give me your contact number, give me everything. What do I need to do to reach you? We are so prepared that other cities throughout this state are basing their preparation upon us. I was so happy to talk about colleen.com/eclipse. You would have thought I had done it myself, that I had put this information together, but I was proud of the staff and the time and emergency management and the folks who stood there and made sure that we were going to be safe.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. It's certainly been one team, one fight that we've been working on as a city.
One team, one fight. You did an excellent job, and I was so proud. I was just so proud. Tim, Tim L said, Ms. Carver, you going to stop talking about it? I said, well, let me call Peter. So, I didn't stop. We're prepared, we're ready to go, and when the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth comes, have your glasses on, do what you need to do, be safe, but follow the instructions of colleen.com/eclipse.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city should, citizens should know that the city's been getting a lot of great exposure related to this upcoming total eclipse. We were recently on, what was it, Today or Good Morning Today, one of those shows, and so, they were highlighting our city. They were down where we have the new monument that has a Colleen out there, so excited about that. But the question I had was, do we have a meeting planned for the following Tuesday?
Yes, we do, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do we anticipate having leftover traffic, if you will, that may affect the meeting time on that Tuesday?
No. Most of what we've been, like I said, we've been working with the chamber, and they've been working with their hotel contacts, the majority of people, about half of them are leaving, are checking out Monday morning, and so, that means they're not returning Monday night, and then, the other half are checking out Tuesday morning, so they won't be here Tuesday evening.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank y'all for the job that y'all doing. The question I have is, in reference to after this, do, are we prepared with the influx of people that's coming in? That's not only including hotels, but we have people, I would imagine, coming from different cities across Texas. With RVs and vehicles, are we prepared for, as the aftermath of cleaning up, in terms of our streets? And I would imagine maybe some things, a whole lot of trash left.
Right, so, we've been working with our Public Works Department, and so, they do have a staffing plan afterwards to try their best to start cleaning that up as quickly as possible. And then, obviously, through our parks, our amazing park staff clean those parks, so they've been working on a staffing plan as well for that, for afterwards, so that they can go through and ensure that our parks are still safe to use afterwards.
Great, great. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This question just came to me, and I do believe is a good one. There are a lot of folks that are asking what they need to know if they're planning to use their business parking lot or an area to prepare food. What does, what is it that the community needs? it that the community needs to know related to that?
So that's certainly a large question, depending more specifically on what they're looking to do. So the, the biggest advice that I've been giving to folks who've been calling our office is, one, for them to figure out what they want to do. Now might be a little too close for them to figure that out. But whether they're just wanting to do food, or whether they're wanting to rent parts of their property out, you know, they need to figure out what is it specifically they're wanting to do. And if they're renting out parts of their property to overnight guest, you need to also take into account if you are going to somehow provide showers or restroom facilities, how is all that going to happen? Probably about six months ago, we were told as a county, many of the municipalities, we were told, don't try, from all of our contacts where we rent porta-potties from, don't try and rent a porta-potty. They're all out. So most of, most, most facilities can't get that to you. But you'll want to obviously check our city ordinances, and that's through our Development Services Department. Depending on what area you're in, what, what it's zoned for, you can and cannot do some things. So obviously, in residentially zoned areas, parking RVs and large boats and trailers like that is, is not allowed. Anywhere in the city, you are not allowed to park on an unimproved surface. So that basically means if it is not paved with either concrete or asphalt, you should not be parking something with wheels on, on top of that surface. So there's a multitude of that. It just really depends on what it is that that business or property owner is really wanting to do. If they're going to do food, they would need to go through public health to make sure they have a food permit. There's, there's a lot of that.
Great information. Thank you.
The biggest thing, I would say, Mr. Perez, would you, colleen.com/ eclipse, that information is there.
We do have-
ColleenTexas.com.
Yes, ma'am. ColleenTexas.com/eclipse. We have-
The slash. Okay. Don't y'all listen to me. Listen, colleen.gov.
Right. Yeah, these two websites here, the city one, the colleantexas.gov, we actually have an FAQ on there that has some of these questions answered. They're in dropdown, so it has the question, and then a dropdown, and it'll give you a list of answers there. That's, that is helpful. We've been putting that together as we've been receiving questions and then answering them. We've been trying our best to document those.
That's good. Thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Perez, Chief Kobinski, Chief Lopez, Public Works Department, Communication Department, the city of Colleen will be open on that day. All hands will be on deck. So you, I thank you for acknowledging this is a city staff project, working together and the whole team. So thank you for all you do, and continue to move forward and do great things.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Kobinski, would you like to have anything to say, sir? Chief Lopez? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perez. This is the part I was waiting for. Consent agenda.
MN 24006, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of February 13, 2024. RS 24042, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment report for the quarter ended December 31, 2023. RS 24043, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the West Ransier Avenue Project. RS 24044, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Chaparral Road Phase 1 project. RS 24045, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city of Colleen to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the United States Army Garrison Fort Cavazos for the Centex Sustainable Communities Partnership. RS 24046, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the award of bid number 2428, pump station number two rehabilitation project to Barch Construction with a contract in the amount of $2,272,859.14. RS 24047, consider a memorandum resolution approving the replacement of the municipal court audiovisual system with the GTS Technology Solutions in an amount of $52,619.64. RS 24048, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the renewal of annual maintenance agreement of municipal court software in an amount of $258,282. RS 24049, consider a memorandum resolution appointing presiding and alternate judges for the May 4, 2024 general election. RS 24050, consider a memorandum resolution accepting approximately fifteen parcels totaling 63.5 acres for future project, excuse me, for future park development through a prior land dedication credit to offset future parkland dedication agreement. RS 24051, consider a memorandum resolution renaming the Fort Hood Regional Trail to Fort Cavazos Regional, Regional Trail. RS 24052, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to the Bond Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you for that, Madam Secretary. Public hearing, Madam Secretary.
PH 24007, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the City of Colleen Code of Ordinances by amending Section 8-1 and adding Section 8-242, establishing water use standards and providing for the implementation of a vehicle wash facility annual certification program. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, providing for amendments to the city's plumbing code, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a severability clause, providing for a savings clause, providing for publication, and an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, we went through the presentation last, did y'all click on the vote on this? You can leave it there if you want to. I just wanted to make sure before it reset. The presentation was done last week. Do you want Mr. Abbott? Good evening, Mr. Abbott, to go back through it. Bless you. Okay, Mr. Abbott, there is a question from Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was mentioned that, or suggested, that a plumber would need to be on site daily to oversee whether or not there's a leak. Is that in fact true?
True.
Not true?
No, not, not to this ordinance, no. We can, we have the right for an inspection if there's a due cause, but a plumber is not required to be on site.
Thank you for that. The other question I have, do we have the, the established fee for a violation of these car washes?
Yes, sir. Okay, sir, if you recall, we were looking at Austin, San Antonio, San Marcos, and of course, Colleen. All four cities use a municipal fine for enforcement up to $500, except for San Antonio, they do a tiered system. San Antonio does, the first offense would be 50 to 100. The second offense would be 250 to 500, and the third offense would be 1,000 to 2,000 upon conviction.
Okay. Thank you for that information. And how often would we potentially inspect these properties?
It'd be an annual basis.
Annual basis, one time per year? Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Abbott? Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. And, Mr. Abbott, thank you for being here. And just like any other code enforcement violation, parking on the grass, for example, is up to $500. So I don't see a difference there. But code enforcement is, does a really good job of providing education and, and helping these business owners transition in any time that there's a new ordinance. So if you go out and you find a car wash that's not in compliance, your first move or initiative is not to give them a citation for $500. You're going to educate them and help them come into compliance. And ultimately, if they refuse to do that, then obviously, then that's the consequence at the end of the line. But I've spoken with several local car wash owners about this ordinance. Actually, one of them was proactive and came to me and said that he thought it was a great idea. He owned six car washes in this area at one time, and he said, all the stuff that we're doing, he said, they've been doing, they have the equipment already. It's part of the car wash package. If you go to, to buy a car wash, you go to the manufacturer that provides the equipment, their reclamation system is part of that package. So you're already paying for it. It's whether or not you're using it to its full abilities or not. And there's no penalization here. If you're an older style, drive-up car wash with the wands in there, you already have a grit trap system that you're supposed to maintain. So there's no difference there. And this also does provide benefit, again, to the city's MS4 permit that we have to maintain with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and the EPA in regards to our stormwater quality here in the city. So, you know, it seems that we've, we've covered all the bases. As we can see, there, I don't believe that there are any car wash owners here tonight that are in opposition of this. So again, thank you for being here, and, and you're, thank you to your staff for doing all the work on this.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks again for the work from the staff when putting this together. I know it's the first step, and I'm sure we'll be adjusting as we go along. And so with that, I move that we approve. Oh, I'm sorry, this is public hearing first. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Well, just keep your name up there. I'll call on you. Just keep it there. If there's no more, any more questions. Thank you, Mr. Abbott.
Thank you.
We will now hold public hearing. Public hearing is open. Mr. Sean Price. Mr. Sean Price. Mr. Sean Price. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve RS, the current RS.
Yes, sir. That is our PFC 2-24- Sorry, wrong one. I'm on PFC. Sorry about that. It is PH-24-007.
Yes, I move to approve PS 24-007.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Proton.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Madam Mayor, I move that we-
Councilmember Adam Solomon made the motion. Who's second? Mayor Proton's second. All in favor? Mean to adjourn.